Have you reached out to other communities that do have firearms in their schools? And discussed it with them? I mean, to be objective, I guess that's what I'm after here. Have you done that? To see maybe why they've done it or chosen to do it? And seen both sides and then kind of made a decision?
Phil, I can't answer that question completely, but I have, I work in four different school corporations, and every teacher I've spoken to has been against it. So I tried to kind of see what other people were thinking in different places. Everyone I spoke to, teachers said they did not want to have weapons and they weren't interested in having their coworkers with them. So just from, and it's a small sample, but the sample that I had, 100% of them were saying no.
Do you take your direction as a school board just from teachers or from the community and citizens and taxpayers?
What I wanted to do was just get a feel for what people were thinking, because I work in a lot of different aspects. So I wasn't looking at just my school board, but also because you and I had a lot of good conversations and you had me thinking about a lot of interesting ideas. And so what I wanted to do is ask what other people were thinking. So that's what I tried to do.
Art.
Go ahead, I can...
Melissa Crane. Last, the last meeting, you guys had the proposed policy up for us to see. Has it changed at all? You haven't revised it. So it's not just that we're not allowing guns, but we're not allowing any kind of protective weapon in that school, whether it be tasers or dart guns, anything like that. Nothing is going to be allowed. Is that really what we're saying? Okay. I just wanted the clarification again. And when you polled the teachers from the four different school corporations...
I didn't do a polling. It was more just randomly...
When you spoke to them, were they opposed because they themselves didn't want the responsibility? Or they felt that it would be disastrous to actually have teachers with that kind of responsibility? Because they felt that if a teacher snapped, for lack of a better word?
You know, it was interesting. I heard a lot of different comments, and they did range. I mean, some were afraid of someone, you know, doing something. Some were just feeling they didn't want the responsibility. Some feel that they wanted, you know, that they trusted others with responsibility. It was, it seemed like when I was, many of the teachers I spoke to seemed to have, it was a pretty broad range of their fears. But yeah, I mean, kind of what you said, it seemed like I heard several things like that.
I was just curious, because it is a huge responsibility, and I think we all understand that. But there still has to be something done rather than shoving your children in a closet and telling them to be quiet. Because everyone knows...
Yes, my name's Dan Hedinger. Mr. Goody, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't you say that you don't like guns in schools? Is that what?
What I'm saying is I don't believe guns in schools makes schools safer.
Okay, okay. So police can't have guns either?
Police are the group that are allowed to bring weapons into schools.
Okay, that's good, as well it should be. If I can bore you with a few statistics here, this is done from the University of Chicago, okay? This is not some right-wing college. And it says here that, this study was 1993, but it's still indicative of what goes on today. Of the approximately 700,000 police in the United States, 330 innocent people were shot by those 700,000 police. Now, where you have 80 million gun owners, 36 innocent people were shot. You are 1,200 times more likely to be accidentally shot by a cop than a law-abiding citizen with their gun. And I could go on and on. There's pages of research. And that's what Phil's talking about, being objective, going out there and finding things. Not just coming forth with just a bunch of opinions that we have. You know, because opinions shouldn't really mean a whole lot. Reality is what's important. And you say it's not constitutional, it's constitutional. I don't apologize for leaving the last meeting, because we come for a specific purpose, as well as the children and other folks, they got purposes for being here. And when that purpose is accomplished, they move on. I don't think we should have to apologize for that. But anyway, there's ample, ample research out there, Justice Department statistics. I'm not talking about right-wing, I'm talking about the statistics out there. Look at that. We are far safer with guns than without.
I don't know, some good things have come out of this to me. It's made me go back and research the Second Amendment. That Second Amendment was drawn up to draw militia.
Oh my God.
It certainly wasn't.
To ban firearms in schools, then an un-American, then Justice Edmund Scalia is un-American.
I got... What's that?
Now, I realize, Justice Scalia is no match for you and his knowledge of the Second Amendment.
Oh, yeah, just what we need.
I would prefer to take his opinion over yours.
Thank you for your sarcasm.
And I gotta tell you something else, too, sir.
That's right.
You didn't have to go there.
Your little diatribe and Facebook thing, you owe apology. You owe apologies to these people on the school board, which you said about.
How is that? What did I say?
Oh, culture.
Okay, yes, like that.
I just have a problem when someone with anti-American, anti-constitutional, anti-freedom agenda wants to prevent me and any other citizen from exercising our rights as law-abiding Americans. We have to remove these people from public office immediately. The kind of anti-American sentiment has infiltrated and compromised the real safety of our great country and now this community. I assume you're including in that Justice Scalia, because he exempted schools...
Yes, I probably am.
...from your coverage.
But yes, I did say that, and I stand proud of that. I have no problem with that.
I believe that any school board member who votes for this policy is in direct violation of the Constitution and will continue to remind them of the oath they took to uphold that Constitution. I would remind you, that Justice Scalia strongly disagrees with you.
I've also got, I've got something, someone who wrote about, a little bit about the Constitution, and that is, "That the Constitution shall never be construed to prevent the people of the United States who are peaceable citizens from keeping their own arms." Samuel Adams. And he was pretty much around the time that was written. So I'd say he's got one up on Scalia.
I still think, in my opinion, I believe constitutionally, that's why I don't think it applies during that particular judgment they passed on. Don't look at me as if I don't have firearms, and that I don't believe I ever had firearms. But also, I have my beliefs too, just as you do. And guess what? It's what makes us go around. It's just my particular beliefs is, I don't think the firearms in the school makes it safer. And I feel like I appreciate the fact that you feel more comfortable with it in the school. It doesn't make you wrong, and it doesn't make me wrong.
But what you haven't proven is the facts you came to base your belief on anything. We're still waiting.
Part of my discussion is with community members, not only people I know, but asking just additional people, conversation. And in all honesty, I have not had one soul tell me they would support guns in schools. The only time I have heard it was in the meeting I sat in during the committee, with yourself, and then the last meeting here. You present are the only people who've told me they support guns in schools. The others I've spoke to don't support guns in schools. And I've had people seek me out, because this, you know what the good part about this is? It's become a public forum for people to express their opinions. You know, that's the positive thing about what we've achieved here. It has become public, and people have reached out, I believe, to school board members and shared their opinions, which, you know, that's your goal of having us make sure we take the pulse of our community, was our community's beliefs. If I can tell you what I just shared, that is what I heard in the community.
I wish we could have had more of an open meeting, maybe at the high school, where parents could have been invited in, and then both sides of the topic may be discussed in front of everyone, and then, you know, a decision made. Because I think there is a lot of... There's been some... What's the word? I want to be careful here. I think with law enforcement, there's probably been some overabuse of power and coercion, maybe towards teachers. I know I'm at a loss, because I've had teachers come to us in secret saying, "Yes, we are in support of this, but we cannot speak up against what our school board wants to do." And so that tells me right there that there is something wrong with our system. If someone can't openly and honestly express their opinion...
I got several things here. A, you're talking about having a community meeting. You've got two dozen seats in here. You can't have a big meeting in here, okay? And next, you're talking about how the teachers don't want to carry guns. And I'm not, I don't know if I'm pro-carrying guns in schools or not. That's not even an issue to me. But, you know, you say that, and you're assuming that, that because you asked two teachers if they don't agree with guns in schools, that that is the general consensus of everybody? Well, try asking a couple of these schools where they've had the shootings and see what they think. Let's go that route, you know? Talk to somebody that's been through it. These people here have been through it. We're in a little farm town, Monso, Indiana, like I said last meeting. Very unlikely that anything like that's going to happen here, but it is possible, okay? But just to say, just dismiss the whole idea because a couple of teachers said they don't want guns in schools, I don't agree with that, okay? Let me give you a little scenario here, when you're talking about how you think what you're doing is making our schools safer, because it's not. Your little signs aren't making the school safer. Your little buzzers aren't making the school safer. And I walk into the school, and they don't know who I am at all, okay? My son's a new student in Meadowland. I've been in that school two or three times. A different person might be in every time.
My fear is, and what I think we're missing here is, I've heard people dabble on it. A firearm is our only last line of defense. It's the only reason we want it. We just want the capability of knowing that the possibility is there if a teacher would so choose, or a principal, or maybe one of you would so choose to take that up. No one has ever demanded that a teacher be required to carry one. But what you guys are doing, you are taking that possibility away. And what you're also doing, and Mr. Crabbe, I understand what you're saying about the attention, you know? When I started this, it was to bring awareness. I feel very confident that that has happened. I'm sorry, Mr. Million doesn't like what's necessarily on the Facebook page, but I have that First Amendment right. I'm not opposed to requesting resignations for anyone in public office. Maybe they're a committee member here in town. I don't have a problem asking for the resignation if they don't want to follow the oath they took of the Constitution. No problem. I make no apologies for that, sir. And again, I'm sorry that I'm not of your legal quality. But, Mr. Crabbe, when you talked about what attention this is bringing to our schools, do I feel like law enforcement has went a little bit overboard? And the general comments in town is, "It looks like they're backpedaling to go on overboard"? Yeah, I do. Maybe they could string it out a little bit. I'm glad they did. I'm glad they're doing what they're doing. But it's a little bit hyperdrive. But again, we're missing the point that a firearm is only for a last line of defense. And what this policy is doing, not only do I believe it's tearing this community apart, because I do, I do feel like this policy will do nothing good for this community. It will only tear it apart. But what it's also doing is, when we talk about attention, what you called bringing attention to something, I consider it to be awareness. You pass this policy, you might as well put a front-page ad in the Herald Journal that says, "Come here. Nobody's got a gun for a last line of defense." And that's not, that's not a very smart thing to do. You talk about children's safety, that is not something you advertise. This policy is no good for this community. I think you guys are good people. I think you've been misguided. That's all. Just misguided. And I do agree with the fact that this has everything to do with the constitutional rights. I think this could be a stepping stone to be abused in the future. And I see this bringing absolutely no safety to my children in school, and if anything, it's putting them in harm's way. Because it is openly advertising, "Come here. We won't give you any resistance." What Mr. Rutledge just said, great example. It could happen. It's a what-if, but you know what? We've had a lot of what-ifs that have happened. It's realistic. But all I hear is the children's safety, but I have no statistics. I have absolutely nothing. I haven't heard anything that says a teacher accidentally shot his child in school. I would urge you to find me that. But I know one thing, at every one of these school shootings, someone, someone could have stopped the shooter and saved children's lives.
A kid walked in, school dance, got mad because a girl didn't ask him. Got ready to ring the bell. My neighbor was standing in the neighborhood, gun this big, shot him straight in the head. Ran around, pelted a lot of other kids. Didn't hurt them, because it wasn't directly on top of him. A D.D. kid that was always in trouble in the office said, "I'm done," ran and tackled the guy. And I'm emotional for one reason, because you haven't lived through it. You haven't lived through any of that. And believe me, it's scary, and you don't ever feel safe again. But I will not let my school become an armed jail. My kids are going to feel safe when they're there. Now, do I believe in guns in school? I don't know yet. And Mr. Hunt asked me that, because I have his son every day.
You have him born, too.
And I love them all. And it's very offensive to me that we're just going to stay there. The majority of my teachers have the problem of hearing the gunshots and leaving their kids. And you guys, how would you feel? And they cannot do that, you guys. They're not going to leave those children behind. And if your child is the one that they left behind, and the guy comes in behind them and kills your kids, and there's no teacher, they'll never live with themselves again.
That's true.
And emotionally, you guys, teachers are not prepared to do that. That's not what we were trained to do. And when we become that person, then I'm not sure the schools as well they would be anyway. They probably would be police officers. And I'm talking elementary, you guys. I taught high school, middle and down. But that is the majority of what my kids, my teachers said. "Mrs. Crabbe, I can't do it, because I cannot leave my kids. I'll never leave them." And they're like little gaggles. I mean, we gave them, we gave them, the officers came and didn't look to my school in particular, because, you know, we have a lot of windows, and we're the farthest ones out. And I get that. And you guys, I'm the only one that's had a teacher that died in my school. And I gave CPR for 25 minutes. I get, and she passed. I mean, my teachers were right there on top of me then. I've been through this, you guys. More than I bet, I have seen it. And my thing is, I will not, my school is safe for my kids every day because they believe it's safe. And the only way they're going to be scared is if they don't feel prepared. And I had three kids that didn't come back after we did return lockdowns for a few days. They were scared. But you guys, that's my job. And my kids have been taught to hide first, and then we're putting them out windows. We have a great plan in place. We're pushing stuff in front of those doors, so he has to shoot through things. Those kids, I mean, they are, those police officers that came and talked to our teachers gave them hope that we've got a chance. I don't think I have a chance. I'm not sure I'd have a chance if I had a gun in my hand, to be honest, because I'm going to be the first one gone. And I get that. And I talk to my husband and my kids about that every day. But I choose to be a public servant, and I choose to keep my kids as safe as I possibly can with what we've got. So I'm not here to talk about bearing arms or not, but I'm here to speak for my staff at Eastland and Mrs. Hertz. But I just don't think my teachers can do it. And that is the reason why. Not because they wouldn't give their lives, but because they couldn't give up their kids. And then you're making them have a choice. And if you ever really go and watch the school shootings, the thing that we should be concerned about is many times a fire alarm is going to go off in your school because of the guns and the smoke. And what's our kids immediately going to do? They're going to go to the hallways, because that's all they know. So there's lots of reteaching that we need to do, because somehow we've got to stop that. Because there's probably, any smart guy's going to stop the fire alarm, and every kid's going to the hallway. You know, and I can't stop that. But I have told my teachers, and with the police and with the school board's approval, that every teacher of mine, there better be 911 calls coming from every cell phone in that building. Because I'm dead, and I get that. My secretary is gone. But there better be 911s, because no, it does not matter. That's probably what's going to save the life. I'm just not sure. You don't know what anybody's going to do in the heat of the moment. Whether they carry or they don't carry. Until you're on top of it, I don't know. So I'm speaking in just what I've learned, probably for sure, in the last couple of days, when we've really, really got down to the business of what we should and shouldn't do. And the thing about throwing, your question about throwing things, that is the last option. That is not, that is if they have no other line of defense. What else can they do? And you're not going to stop some kids from doing that, just like in my school shooting. That kid didn't care. He's done. That kid made him mad, and I could not stop. There was no way. He was out, and he tackled that kid, and that kid got up and he ran. He ran to the woods, and they caught him later, and he's in jail to this day. But it was all over and over. And I think, I think you just don't know how it's all going to play out, but all you can do is be prepared as you can be. And at Purdue, every kid that had training knew what to do. There was teachers that didn't, at the college level. And so I want my kid to be that kid that knows what to do, all the way through. Whether we're doing it right, whether we can be creative, it's better than doing nothing. And that's, and I think that that's where we're at right now in schools. And so I want you to know, but my personal opinion doesn't matter. I have to be in the place where what can my teachers really do? What realistically can they do? And I'm going to tell you guys, they're not going to leave those kids.
First of all, thank you.
You're welcome.
And secondly, who told them it was required of them?
A kid walked in, school dance, got mad because a girl didn't ask him. Got ready to ring the bell. My neighbor was standing in the neighborhood, gun this big, shot him straight in the head. Ran around, pelted a lot of other kids. Didn't hurt them, because it wasn't directly on top of him. A D.D. kid that was always in trouble in the office said, "I'm done," ran and tackled the guy. And I'm emotional for one reason, because you haven't lived through it. You haven't lived through any of that. And believe me, it's scary, and you don't ever feel safe again. But I will not let my school become an armed jail. My kids are going to feel safe when they're there. Now, do I believe in guns in school? I don't know yet. And Mr. Hunt asked me that, because I have his son every day.
You have him born, too.
And I love them all. And it's very offensive to me that we're just going to stay there and hide. That's not where we teach our kids. That's why they keep on teaching. And I get that. They don't get the whole, it's just, it's very emotional for me. Okay, but let me tell you this. And I'm going to speak for my teachers at Eastland, because we've been practicing, we've been doing some different things. And we learned a lot from Sandy Hood, to be honest, because it was a first elementary. Jen's heard a lot from the high school and different aspects of that. And the overall, and I'm not going to say most, but I would say the majority of my teachers, this is their biggest problem. And I get it. I have a gun, and I'm a teacher in the classroom. I'm not the principal, okay? Because that's why I don't want to go there with me. I'm not sure how you feel about it. And I explained that to Mr. Hunt. I said, "I don't know yet, because I've lived through it." The majority of my teachers would have the problem of hearing the gunshots and leaving their kids. And you guys, how would you feel? And they cannot do that, you guys. They're not going to leave those children behind. And if your child is the one that they left behind, and the guy comes in behind them and kills your kids, and there's no teacher, they'll never live with themselves again.
That's true.
And emotionally, you guys, teachers are not prepared to do that. That's not what we were trained to do. And when we become that person, then I'm not sure the schools as well they would be anyway. They probably would be police officers. And I'm talking elementary, you guys. I taught high school, middle and down. But that is the majority of what my kids, my teachers said. "Mrs. Crabbe, I can't do it, because I cannot leave my kids. I'll never leave them." And they're like little gaggles. I mean, we gave them, we gave them, the officers came and didn't look to my school in particular, because, you know, we have a lot of windows, and we're the farthest ones out. And I get that. And you guys, I'm the only one that's had a teacher that died in my school. And I gave CPR for 25 minutes. I get, and she passed. I mean, my teachers were right there on top of me then. I've been through this, you guys. More than I bet, I have seen it. And my thing is, I will not, my school is safe for my kids every day because they believe it's safe. And the only way they're going to be scared is if they don't feel prepared. And I had three kids that didn't come back after we did return lockdowns for a few days. They were scared. But you guys, that's my job. And my kids have been taught to hide first, and then we're putting them out windows. We have a great plan in place. We're pushing stuff in front of those doors, so he has to shoot through things. Those kids, I mean, they are, those police officers that came and talked to our teachers gave them hope that we've got a chance. I don't think I have a chance. I'm not sure I'd have a chance if I had a gun in my hand, to be honest, because I'm going to be the first one gone. And I get that. And I talk to my husband and my kids about that every day. But I choose to be a public servant, and I choose to keep my kids as safe as I possibly can with what we've got. So I'm not here to talk about bearing arms or not, but I'm here to speak for my staff at Eastland and Mrs. Hertz. But I just don't think my teachers can do it. And that is the reason why. Not because they wouldn't give their lives, but because they couldn't give up their kids. And then you're making them have a choice. And if you ever really go and watch the school shootings, the thing that we should be concerned about is many times a fire alarm is going to go off in your school because of the guns and the smoke. And what's our kids immediately going to do? They're going to go to the hallways, because that's all they know. So there's lots of reteaching that we need to do, because somehow we've got to stop that. Because there's probably, any smart guy's going to stop the fire alarm, and every kid's going to the hallway. You know, and I can't stop that. But I have told my teachers, and with the police and with the school board's approval, that every teacher of mine, there better be 911 calls coming from every cell phone in that building. Because I'm dead, and I get that. My secretary is gone. But there better be 911s, because no, it does not matter. That's probably what's going to save the life. I'm just not sure. You don't know what anybody's going to do in the heat of the moment. Whether they carry or they don't carry. Until you're on top of it, I don't know. So I'm speaking in just what I've learned, probably for sure, in the last couple of days, when we've really, really got down to the business of what we should and shouldn't do. And the thing about throwing, your question about throwing things, that is the last option. That is not, that is if they have no other line of defense. What else can they do? And you're not going to stop some kids from doing that, just like in my school shooting. That kid didn't care. He's done. That kid made him mad, and I could not stop. There was no way. He was out, and he tackled that kid, and that kid got up and he ran. He ran to the woods, and they caught him later, and he's in jail to this day. But it was all over and over. And I think, I think you just don't know how it's all going to play out, but all you can do is be prepared as you can be. And at Purdue, every kid that had training knew what to do. There was teachers that didn't, at the college level. And so I want my kid to be that kid that knows what to do, all the way through. Whether we're doing it right, whether we can be creative, it's better than doing nothing. And that's, and I think that that's where we're at right now in schools. And so I want you to know, but my personal opinion doesn't matter. I have to be in the place where what can my teachers really do? What realistically can they do? And I'm going to tell you guys, they're not going to leave those kids.
First of all, thank you.
You're welcome.
And secondly, who told them it was required of them to leave their kids?
Yeah.
I don't think it's...
Because that's not my...
The policy is so that somebody didn't, unaware to themselves, bring it on thinking they had some type of exclusion to the criminal code. That's the reason why they recommended declaring it to your employees, is so they wouldn't be unaware and maybe bring it in thinking they were regarded as a special exception, because they misunderstood the law.
But they also advised you or gave you an option of allowing firearms in school, correct?
They gave us options and things for us to consider, yeah.
But you didn't, you just chose on your own, without having any public input, the direction you thought it needed to go. And now you're trying to tell us that that's the way it needs to go.
Okay, when we look at policy, the first of all is policy, myself and Susan. First thing we do is we look at the policies. We examine the options. We ask ourselves, "What is our community?" You know, "Why do we believe our community?" What, I take it off, the one thing I've learned in the entire time I've been on the school board, and it will not change to the day I walk at this board, is the first decision, the last decision I make is, "What's in the best interest of kids?" That is it. That's my only thumbprint.
But this isn't in the best interest of the kids?
That is your opinion, Phil.
No, it's putting them in harm's way.
Phil, please. We're allowed to be on a different side. I'm not condemning you for your opinion. I truly not. I'm just saying, the standard I use is what's best for kids. That's my personal opinion. So that's what the committee does on the policy level when we examine policies. Some policies are changed simply to meet changes in laws, some are quote references. So, and then once we, once we come upon a policy, we think it's time to present it to the board, it's shared with the board members, and then we come to first reading. And the first reading is the first in a public setting. Any policy we review goes through that process. And well, after the first reading, if it moves forward, it goes to the second reading, which is where we're at tonight. Those are the steps in development of policies.
Can anybody offer, I mean, the policies that you have the readings on, does it have to come from you guys or does somebody like me present?
or if somebody like me presents something for you to consider?
Some policies you have are reflections of law, okay, or guidelines. You know, policies are essentially how you kind of direct the general direction of the corporation. You know, it's not where I'm telling this Miller exactly how I wanted to do A, B, C, D, okay? In some cases, it's a little more refined, some cases, it's the general direction. You know, policies come because of legal requirements, we're required to have certain types of policies. You know, it gives maps to our administration to know where they need to go, what they need to do, what path to follow.
And what the community might want.
Well, I'll address this one question and then we're going to close the public hearing, okay? Number one to state, I'm anti-gun Phil, is offensive to me. And let me finish before you try to break in, it's offensive to me. To say anti-constitutional, you know, I've lost relatives in wars who fought for my right every single day. Don't act as if that does not matter, do not!
You don't have to do it that way.
No, all I'm trying to be is clear to you, to declare me unconstitutional...
Do you want to bring law enforcement in now?
And you don't believe my family's done things. Number two, I have a right to bear arms, and I do honor that right. I have a carry permit. I believe the carry permit does not allow me to take my weapon wherever I choose. That's my belief. Did I talk to people? Absolutely, I've talked more people than who's in the room today, asking their opinion. As I told you, not one soul was in support of guns in schools. So I'm not ignoring the public, and I don't believe a single member behind this table is ignoring the public, asking those questions. What I'm saying is, for me, on the multiple people I spoke with, I've had zero for at guns in schools and everyone else against. So I'm taking the pulse of the community, I'm not anti-constitutional.
Why aren't they here?
But you have to realize, the way you've conducted this, I have to take your word for that, and I'll be honest with you. I'm not prepared to do that at this point until you have this in an open atmosphere where both sides can present their topics, and there's a little more seating than what you have here and there's a little more advertising of it to bring the community in. So, I'm sorry, I appreciate what you've just said, but...
Why aren't the others here?
Yeah.
Where are they?
We've had some other meetings there on other topics, and there have been no seats available, so I'm sorry.
But this is the second hearing.
Your topic didn't fill the room, I'm sorry.
With any opposition, it didn't fill the room with any opposition.
And they're asking me why we don't have more seats.
No, that's not what was said.
There's enough seats for you.
That's not what was said, dear, you misunderstood.
I understand.
Where are they? Where are the people that you talked to that say...
Yeah, why aren't they here in support of you, John?
Yes.
They spoke to me and gave their, you know, Phil, you could have spoke to me and given your piece and I would have considered it as I've done everybody else. You know, when you're on the school board, you weigh out...
But I did, but you said you didn't talk to anybody who was in support of it and you talked to me.
Isn't that why there's an open meeting?